I mean, just stuff like that.
There is a, there is a residential cost.
Right.
There was.
Right.
Your system.
Hi, Bill.
Is that the same one? Oh, that's not a big one, is it?
No.
Okay.
At the other one, where the law.
Right.
I did that one time.
That goes up past your elbow.
Hmm.
Hey. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Yeah.
I wasn't quite sad.
Yeah?
On Thursday.
United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation of the ground and invisible liberty and justice for all.
We'll call, please, Dan.
Mayor Grommetchert.
Here.
Alderman Toddlaw.
Here.
Alderman Couch.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers. Alderman Stiki.
Here.
Alderman Hook.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Rizika.
Here.
Mayor, we have Coram.
Okay, thank you. Um, always through the agenda, I see a lot of familiar faces that may have been at last meeting. And what I'd like to do tonight, um, since we have this public hearing scheduled for next week, if you're here tonight to address the board about dangerous animals, specifically dogs, um, would really rather try to save that in those comments till next Wednesday, unless you absolutely feel like you have to address the board tonight for something that's really imperative about it, then, you know, we'll certainly take time to hear you. But if, we would rather get all of those comments and, and, um, all of that next week at the, at the hearing at the Legion Hall, which is next Wednesday night, um, instead of, while everybody's mind is on that, instead of taking it in pieces, we'd rather all have it all at one time. So, um, again, unless you absolutely feel like you have to address the board tonight, I would rather have it next week. Okay, approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
This is the revised agenda.
Revised agenda, yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, Mr. Browning, you are on the list for personal appearances. Would you, you feel like, is, is this about that? And do you feel like you need to?
It's not specifically about what we're going to talk about next week. It's, I'd like to see what it would take, I don't know, special bond? I don't know. That's why I'm asking. What would it take to have a full-time animal control officer just for the city of St. James? The county, they, they have their guy, he has his hands full with the county. You know, that's what I'm running up tonight.
Okay.
And I, I heard that there's possibly a car coming up, just being taken out of service, uh, uh, St. Jen car, police car. And if that's true, that could be used so it wouldn't be another vehicle being purchased. That could be used for an animal control. And if something could be, you know, put together, I would donate forty hours a week free to help you guys out.
Okay. Well, just, uh, just briefly, a little bit of history on that. We were, when I was certainly mayor, whenever we were handling animal control ourselves, and it was, it was really a hassle for the city. We weren't very well equipped to do it. We didn't have the proper kennels or, or any of that storage. And to, uh, to euthanize the animals was a problem. We had to take them to Jackson, and it was, we weren't equipped and weren't set up very well to take care of animal control. And when the, um, sales tax issue came up, that was one of the things that the county presented to the city, is that they would end up with their own animal control, that they were building the proper facilities to handle all that, and that they would take over that for the city as well as the county, and, and be much more well-equipped to be able to do it. So, I'm not ruling that out, but that certainly was the brief, um, um, history of where it got to, or how it got to where it is today. And, uh, it would, uh, I know it would be a pretty big expense for the city, but it's really up to this board what they decide to do.
I don't, I mean, we see on the county, they can't physically take care of the city. They can't. I mean, the man has, there's only one person. And I think under the circumstances lately, you know, maybe it's time to go ahead and do what it takes, you know, bite the bullet. I'm, I'm sure the citizens, most of them, would be in favor of doing whatever it took.
Well, they've, they've all heard what you've said, and will, will add that to the comments for next week, and appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you. Um, Martin.
Okay. We advertised and received bid for overlaying the road to Creston Cemetery. Uh, the price is pretty attractive. There's money in the fund, so we're probably going to do, at that unit price, uh, both of the roads. Um, the, um, if we just did the one road, the kind of main road where you've got the double lane, one's gravel and one's asphalt, it would be sixteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars. So we have enough to do the other kind of older road. There's two roads to the cemetery, to the old cemetery and the new cemetery. You're looking at me funny.
Um, you, you lost me as far as where's the second road?
There are two entrances to the cemetery.
Yeah. One by the football field and one off of.
Both of them.
Right.
One's closer to the Catholic cemetery.
Right, right.
What we're going to do, this bid was for the double lane.
Right.
That to the new cemetery, and have sufficient funds to do both stretches.
This is, this one runs along the side of the fence coming down the hill? Is the road that you're talking about?
No, there's no fence. Yeah. No, we're not, not that. We're talking about coming out of Creston, that road, where it goes by the cornfield and coming out that way.
Yeah, that's, that's sixteen thousand dollar road. Where's the second road at?
There's two ways to get the, the original road to the old cemetery.
The road that goes in the middle of the cemetery?
And that kind of goes.
Oh, that, okay. That goes right through the middle of it. All right. That's hardly even there anymore, right?
No, it's.
Okay.
But it's, I'm not going to widen it. It's, it's really about twelve feet maybe.
Okay, all right. I know what you're talking about.
Some concern was expressed about, uh, the, uh, planting that we're planning on in the, kind of levy area for the habitat, and, uh, that was currently under lease, and there was, you know, concern about the farmer planting some winter crops. So I talked to the farmer who's involved, and he's not planting winter crops, and he's aware of the plan to, to do this. And, you know, he promised to come in and see me, and we would talk about it.
So the trees are going to be planted behind the levy? I thought that part of the, uh, plan was inside the levy.
That's just semantics, but that, yes, inside the levy.
Okay. All right.
Behind, behind the levy to me is the dry side.
Is this side, okay. All right.
The, uh, we had a meeting with the, uh, employee, interested employees on the health insurance changeover, and, uh, there were no kind of extraordinary comments or anything. Everybody seemed satisfied with the options. Um, we've been talking about, uh, applying for what are known as, uh, transportation alternative funds for, uh, a walking bridge over the creek at Forest Street to get that sidewalk that's inside the bridge abutments removed and improve the width and safety of that. Um, in order to submit these grants, you have to have a budget, and it can't be wrong, because once you've submitted it, that's it. And so, uh, the county will be submitting that in our behalf, uh, because, um, we, um, still have an active grant that hasn't been closed out, even though the trail's finished and everything's approved. This is a protracted closeout procedure on the Main Street trail. So the county suggested that they apply for this grant, and the city's behalf. So we, we still have, we're going to write it, we're going to submit it. It'll just be over their signature. And, uh, the engineer that's helping us with that, uh, was an engineer with MODOT, so he's intimately familiar with the process. The, um, we received, uh, every time I get a check from the state or federal government on the flood damages, they tell me it's my final check, and then another check shows up. So, we got the final, I think, check from the state of Missouri for the, uh, spring flood event, which was in April of twenty fifteen. Um, you asked me to research the comprehensive, or a, a, a revision to our code to address the issue of how a development might have an impact that would, on our, on our road system, traffic. But that's, that amendment is on the agenda tonight. It was a pretty simple amendment, just adding one paragraph. It puts it kind of at the discretion of the city administrator to raise the issue when a major project is undertaken, uh, as to whether or not, um, it could have a, a negative impact on, on traffic, and to require a study, uh, to, to address that issue. Um, a while ago, we were talking about a couple of things, um, and one is where potential extension of Maple Street, kind of a joint cooperative project between the city and the special road district, and the county, and the school district. Uh, that required an estimate, because Mississippi Lime, over whose ground it would go, said, you know, "Yeah, we're willing to consider cooperating, but you've got to tell us what it is, where it's going to go, and what you want." So we got that work done, uh, and the potential costs are shown in, in that paragraph. Same guy also looked at the Chadwell Road improvements, because if we're going to do that, we're going to have to have a set of plans drawn, because MODOT won't approve it without a set of plans. And his engineer's estimate was ninety-five thousand dollars to realign the road, change the grade, provide the, the fill so that it's a slope down to the existing grade, about three hundred feet down the hill. Um, the contractor looked at that and thinks it could be done for about a third cheaper than that. Uh, of course, we would never know until it's bid, you know, so it's somewhere between sixty and ninety thousand dollars. Finally, we discovered, uh, this week, a, um, a stormwater culvert that goes, uh, into an inlet on Sycamore, and goes under Park Drive, kind of towards the hospital, and just, and, and it connects up with a, a corrugated plastic pipe that goes down by the fire station. The stretch under the road is falling, it's rusted out, and it's collapsing. So, uh, we hadn't planned on it, but that's kind of an emergency repair that we're going to have to do here as soon as we can get the utilities located. Uh, and we do it with our own forces, uh, but we're going to, going to have that, uh, the road closed for a couple of days anyway, trying to get that work through.
Question, Mayor?
Wonder where we are on if we decided to go ahead and put the Maple Street extension in? Uh, right now, it's kind of a guessing game, right? What we're going to do, if we're going to do it, depends on what everybody wants to chip in, right?
Well, Mississippi Lime is willing to donate the right away. Uh, it would become a special road district road, so they would have to be involved in it.
Does Mississippi Lime own all the property?
All, all but one parcel between the end of Maple Street, which is about two hundred feet deep.
That'd be in the city limits.
That'd be Del Commune, probably, I'm sure. That, right?
It is.
And, um, the, um, you know, we've had quarries tell us that they might donate rock, and, I mean, lots of pieces. So, th- this estimate is, other than buying the ground.
Okay.
If you had to buy all the material, and, you know, and do all, all the work, uh, then this is the estimate of what it would, would take to do it.
All right.
Doesn't mean, you know, it's not written in stone, and maybe there are lots of ways to skin that cap.
But, to the most part, we would end up being a county road. I mean, we wouldn't have that much involvement in it, other than that short piece.
No.
So, yeah, everybody's going to have to. We'd have to get on the same page.
Is that going to be a problem, that short piece?
I, we don't, we don't know. We, I mean, we, we've never gone there yet with, with those people.
What's the idea of that road, just as a outlet?
Really, an outlet, get kids and, or people back, you know, relieve Market Street and, uh, Ace, what, Eighth, Ninth? Uh, you know, we've, the narrow, as narrow as Ninth Street is, it would certainly take a whole lot of traffic off of it. And, yeah, we get to school there.
Schools are interested in it, because it would make the bus routes a lot easier for them. I think a lot of people on Market Street are interested, and they would try to get some of the traffic off of there.
And we know, you know, we've got, certainly we've got complaints and comments about Ninth Street, and as narrow as it is, we can't put a sidewalk on there, and kids walking up and down that street, getting to school. It's just a dangerous situation, and there's not a lot of room, and not a lot, not a lot of options that you've got with Ninth Street. So. Okay, uh, thank you.
Kenny could not be here tonight.
Yeah. So you got Kenny's report there? Dave?
Dave, uh, had some oral surgery today. He was out.
Okay. All right. Eric?
Good evening. Good evening.
I didn't have anything terribly or shattering on there, I believe. Uh, if you have any questions, I'd be certainly happy to answer those. All right.
Thanks.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks, Eric. Um, kind of on that same line, now we'll get into public comments, Kara will, where you back there? All right.
Good evening. Um, Kara, Downtown Renewal Project President. Um, while I have the majority of my board members here, I would like to introduce the board to you guys, so you guys can put faces with names. Nicole French is our secretary. Lawrence Myers, Design Guideline Chair, who's been working very hard on the wayfinding signs that you guys have in your pile there. Kathy Grusling, previous treasurer, now at-large member. Um, Casey Better is at-large member, and Deborah Peters is at-large member. So we're missing a few other people, um, that aren't here, but wanted to be able to, you guys put some faces with names, so that you knew who else was on the board. So, um, in front of you, I submitted the proposal for the Downtown Renewal Project for the city funding for the wayfinding signs downtown. Um, the goal of this whole project is really to help streamline things downtown and brand downtown. Um, Lawrence worked very closely with Sandra, um, in the tourism guide packet, so that all of the symbols and et cetera will be, um, the same, whether you're reading the visitor's guide map, or whether you're looking at the signs throughout downtown. Um, we, um, went back to the budget, we had a special board meeting on Monday to address some of the issues and et cetera with this. We have, um, a five thousand dollar matching fund grant from, um, the community foundation. I have it wrong on here, I have community development, but it's from a community foundation grant. And, um, the total cost of this project, just to get it up and running, is seven thousand two hundred eighty-one dollars and seventy-six cents. So what we would like to submit to you is that, I know there was some concern about using, um, taxpayer money for private businesses, advertisement, et cetera. So we have this other five thousand dollars to pay for the printing and the actual signs themselves, um, versus the city paying for them. Um, we would like to, within the money that we have, I just did a rough estimation, um, of the installation. I had talked with, um, Dave Pinkley previously, and he thought that, yes, his guys could do it, but he didn't necessarily have the money to be able to install them. And so we discussed within our budget that we would have the money to pay for the installation.
The, the, uh, hourly rate that you have for city employees is inaccurate?
I.
And I think you need to talk to Martin to give it around, know where you could use it.
And that's, that's what I planned to do, we were just, and I have another full-time job, so I was trying to put this together as quick as I could without, I mean, that was a ballpark figure, um, so that we could at least see budget-wise where we were at. Um, because we also wanted to take in point the quarterly, um, updates within the, within the signs too, so we were looking at all the figures that it would take to maintain and keep the project going. So do you have any other questions as far as the proposal and feedback?
All right. Kara, this, there was some talk in the one meeting that I, I went to about asking the businesses to pay for.
Correct.
You've talked, I guess you talked about that and decided to take it out of the grant?
And we can, I mean, we certainly could ask the businesses to pay for it, but we have this other five thousand dollar matching grant. So while we have that money to get the project up and going, um, I think the easiest way is that we pay for it out of pocket with the grant money first. Um, we could certainly ask the businesses to pay for it, but I, what I heard from a lot of the businesses is that they, you know, they, they're not getting rich, they are struggling, they, you know, yes, it is not a, not a huge investment for them to, um, invest in the sign printed, but if we have the money, obviously, it would be easier for us to do it. The other flip side to that, too, is, again, we're a volunteer organization, so for us to be able to get around to every business and make sure that they're paying their money and paying it in a timely manner, et cetera, that, I mean, that gets, that gets very demanding, um, for this, for this project, yeah.
And you have that, the money to cover that, it's not city funds.
Correct.
Not taxpayer money.
Correct.
You're going to cover that through money you have from another source.
Right. So the board, the board pretty much felt there wouldn't be much difference whether it was business paid for, or whether it was grant-funded from another source, as long as it wasn't city money that was paying for it, that it was totally separate.
It's your business, it's not our business.
Right.
Okay. Kara, let me ask a question.
Uh-huh.
You said you have other money to pay for these people who go on these signs, these businesses. Is there any other way you can spend this money that would be more effective than putting their names on these signs?
The money, it was a matching grant for the city fund, so it was, it's earmarked for this, for this project itself.
For the signs?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
I, I have a question.
Uh-huh.
Something in here about plant rental?
Yes. So I had talked with Ellen Hogan Miller, we had discussed, you know, obviously, we would like the base of the signs to be attractive, and, um, so she, her, what she does is twenty-five dollars a week to come in, and she, she does a plant rental system. So she plants the flowers at the end of the season, she takes them home, puts them in her greenhouse.
I see.
Babies them all winter, and replants them next year, so.
That's what I thought it was.
Yes.
Just wasn't sure. Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I'm not too sure we want to take, well, it's not on the agenda, we can't take a vote on it tonight anyway, can we?
No.
No.
You know, you're approving a budget with a five thousand dollars budget, I guess the question is, when can I feel comfortable to start spending it, is what you're addressing?
Well, they have to spend it by the end of the month, right? Because we had already, is this what we had already?
No, it's next year's budget.
No, this is.
Oh, this is this year's budget. Yeah, you got thirty days to spend it.
Like, three weeks at this point.
All right, you could.
I would hate to see it rushed, and something not be printed right, or made right, or something like that. So if we could carry it over, that might be useful.
And we, we had plans for, I mean, basically, the money from the five thousand from the city is just about spent on just physically paying for the pieces of the signs to come in. That's four thousand six hundred forty-one dollars. So, that pretty much is the city budget, and then the other five thousand is paying for the, the remaining amount. We don't think the whole project itself will be totally up and installed until November is what we're shooting for.
Just, just to be clear, the effect of carrying it over is, we will lose, in, in the budget you're adopting next month, the, uh, anticipated carryover by that five thousand dollars, and increase that line out of about five thousand dollars. So, the, that line, I'm going to go with fifteen, and your carryover this year would drop by five, which is what amendment that still have to make before you move next month.
All right. Any other questions, Phil? If I take this and mill, mill it around, and.
Sure.
Kind of questions we've got.
So at the next board meeting, will be a vote on it, or?
Do you have any pictures of what these signs will look like?
Yes, they were in.
Yeah. Did you have any look at them?
Yeah.
Okay, never mind, never mind, never mind.
There was some question at the time that they don't match the current signs that we just put in two years ago. Um, are you still proposing the same style?
Yes.
I don't know how we got on the cedar stuff, anyway.
No, the, the black ones we just put in, not two, uh, what, two years ago?
I don't know which ones they were.
Prior to Sandra, so it was probably at least two and a half, three years ago. Um, they're, basically, their signs for the background is black, and what with white printing, this would be brown, and then the, the sign, the pole itself is green. So. Any other questions?
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Kara, thanks.
Any other public comments? Kara?
Man, sure, actually. I'm here representing Lieutenant Colonel J. Felix San James Camp, uh, three twenty-six, Sons of Union Veterans Civil War. And we have scheduled on September twenty-fourth, a living history and a, kind of like a bank raid green act. And I apologize for coming so late, because I thought somebody else was going to address you all, and it's like, so now I emailed the other day, and I found out that somehow I had volunteered to do it, and so I apologize for waiting for so long. But we would like to request permission from the city to use the property down on Front Street by Gavry that's called, like, the San James Militia uses, uh, a city property. We ask permission to use that property for, uh, our activities. And then, uh, what we have planned is, it runs from ten AM to three PM, we'll have a five or six different stations, we'll have a cannon where we'll fire periodically, and then we have some, uh, rifles. So we just shoot black powder, and we fire that, you know, like, three or four times, I'm not sure. It just depends on what kind of crowd shows up and what they want to see. But we'll have people, we'll have a camp scene, we'll have, uh, games for kids, and different activities like that. But, uh, primarily, as we would like to do, the reenactment of the bank raid that happened on, uh, August fifteenth, eighteen sixty-one, as we would like to ask permission to, uh, and that starts at one PM, and would like to ask permission for, uh, to close City Marcus, not Market, Main Street, from, uh, like, Gavry to Jefferson, just for that, probably about an hour or so.
Do we have to have this one running? Or can we just approve it right now?
Sure.
Or make a motion to approve it?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Thank you. Okay, resolution two thousand sixteen thirty-two, a resolution reappointing Carla Fluff to the St. James Housing Authority Board.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. And a resolution two thousand sixteen thirty-three, a resolution appointing Jack Kettin to the St. James Tourism Tax Commission.
Make a motion to approve.
Was he finished?
Well, I was going to ask if we could get a couple trash cans, you know, at the service.
That'd be no problem.
We are, our camp is going to provide the water potties, so that's, you know, our initial intention. Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Kara.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Okay, minutes of the regular meeting of August 25th.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And a closed session of August 25th.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, resolution 201632, a resolution reappointing Carla Codwell to the St. Genevieve Housing Authority Board.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Resolution 201633, a resolution appointing Jack Kettin to the St. Genevieve Tourism Tax Commission.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All business, bill number 4116, second reading.
An ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri authorizing the mayor to execute a professional consulting services agreement with Huesnick, Hay, Rowe, and Stroder, LLC, certified public accountants of K. Girard, Missouri for auditing services.
Make a motion to approve. I just want to point out the rate has not changed.
Good.
Good. Or second, whichever. Roll call, please.
Alderman Codwell?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Razika?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 4116 now becomes ordinance 4053.
Thank you. Bill number 4117, second reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve fiscal year 2016 budget relating to the Rural Fire Fund budget number 60.
Move to approve.
Second.
Alderman Razika?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman Codwell?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 4117 now becomes ordinance 4054.
Thank you. Bill number 4118, second reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve fiscal year 2016 budget relating to the Valley Springs Tiff Fund budget number 40.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Razika?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Codwell?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 4118 now becomes ordinance 4055.
Thank you. Bill number 4119, second reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve fiscal year 2016 budget relating to the K-9 Fund budget number 29.
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Codwell?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Razika?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 4119 now becomes ordinance 4056.
Thank you. Bill number 4120, second reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve fiscal year 2016 budget relating to the Transportation Fund budget number 21.
Make a motion to approve. Second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Codwell?
Yes.
Alderman Razika?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 4120 now becomes ordinance 4057.
Thank you. And bill number 4121, second reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve fiscal year 2016 budget relating to the General Fund budget number 10, Department number 16 police.
Motion to approve. Second. And roll call.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman Codwell?
Yes.
Alderman Razika?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 4121 now becomes ordinance 4058.
Okay, thank you. New business, bill number 4123, first reading.
An ordinance approving the budget for the City of St. Genevieve for fiscal year 2017.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor of the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Bill number 4124, first reading.
An ordinance amending the City of St. Genevieve Code of Ordinances, Chapter 500, Buildings and Building Regulations, Section 500.190, Construction Permits.
Question?
Um, should there be any language in here on whose responsibility to do the comprehensive traffic study, or does that fall on the city or the owner?
The owner would have to hire a qualified engineer to do the study.
Is there language in here? Should it be, or...
Sure. How do I not have that ordinance?
Okay, so you want to make a motion with that?
I'll make a motion if we... You say including a comprehensive traffic study by a qualified professional engineer to determine...
The responsibility of the property owner, not the city.
Or developer, or what?
Yeah. Because right now, it's very vague, and it just says the city may require, but it doesn't say who's paying for it.
Good point.
And I'll make a motion to approve with that amendment to it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, bill number 4125, first reading.
An ordinance approving a memorandum of agreement with Alliance Water Resources Incorporated and Missouri Corporation to modify the initial professional service agreement dated August 12th, 2010.
Motion to approve. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And bill number 4126, first reading.
An ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve authorizing the mayor to enter into a proposal with Burn Bowman Contracting Company of St. Genevieve, Missouri to overlay the South Cemetery Road off Highway M in Cresson Cemetery in amount not to exceed $16,276.60.
Motion to approve.
I'd like to ask you to amend this to include additional work at the unit, at the bid unit price.
Sounds good. Okay. You okay with that? Both of you? All right. Did we have any other bidders?
No. The other one who had the information got the date.
Okay.
Is there a timetable on this? Do we need a second on that?
That would be useful, because we're getting to point.
All in favor of first reading on 4126?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to have a second reading?
Second.
All in favor of second reading of 4126?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so second reading of bill number 4126.
I make a motion to approve.
He can't do that yet?
I'm just kidding, but Buck just showed up, okay?
An ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve authorizing the mayor to enter into a proposal with Burn Bowman Contracting Company of St. Genevieve, Missouri to overlay the South Cemetery Road off Highway M in Cresson Cemetery in amount not to exceed $16,276.60, and to include...
Additional work at the bid unit price as directed by the city administrator.
$94.
Second.
All right. Yeah, $94.90.
Yes.
And roll call, please.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman Codwell?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Razika?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4126 now becomes ordinance 4059.
Any other business, anybody? Okay, we would like to have a short closed session relating to litigation and personnel.
Litigation and personnel.
Move to go into closed session to discuss litigation and personnel.
Second. Roll call.
Alderman Codwell?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Razika?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.